Well, thank you for coming to the Montclair City Council meeting. We will begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge allegiance, and I'll have the city clerk introduce those two individuals.
Right, tonight's invocation will be given by Chaplain Diana Delgado of Chaplain of the Streets, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rue.
Great, please stand. Come on, Diane. Thank you for being here today.
Hello, everybody. Praise the Lord. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, today we humbly express our gratitude and admiration for your mighty work. We thank you for your loving kindness, the gift of life, and the unity that we share. We honor our cities, our leaders, businesses, churches, families, and individuals as we gather for this council meeting. We seek your guidance to ensure wise, righteous decisions that uplift all and bring glory to you. Tonight, we pray for wisdom, strength, and courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. Bless our mayor, our council members, and staff in the precious name of Jesus, and we seek traveling mercies as we return home safely to our families this evening. We thank you for who you are in our lives in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Who's doing the pledge?
Please join me as we salute the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
I'm here.
And Mary Dutre.
Present.
Good, thank you.
Next item is a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public that wish to speak. One of the consent calendar items on the agenda, or they have an item that's not on the agenda they wish to speak on. You will have five minutes to speak. Just a reminder for everybody, if an item is not on the agenda, the Brown Act of the State of California prevents the city council to comment on. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to please see if she has any speakers today.
Yes, I have one card from Carolyn Raft, and Ruby Long said she was going to join us tonight, so I'm just waiting for her to show up on Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, Carolyn, come on up. As soon as the mosquito vector control bar, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to bring you up to date a little bit. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Diana, staff. I wanted to bring you up on the vector control is getting more and more. People are becoming wise, and they're going into it more to find out what's happening. And as of right now, on Twitter, we have like 809 followers. On Nextdoor, are you guys familiar with Nextdoor? Okay, we have 166,453. Facebook, we have 1,320. Instagram, we have 647. So it's, a lot of people now are going into it, and I think because they understand maybe more and more how important that the vector control is. Right now, as far as Montclair, Montclair is doing great. We don't really have anything that was tested for West Nile virus. Chino has had some, Upland, Rancho, and Chino Hills sometimes, but it's not like last year. Last year, this year, we're down way under a half of what we had last year at this time. And they will continue spraying. So, and I think, I hope everybody's noticed that it's made a difference as far as, especially in the San Bernardino area. So we don't, as far as Zika, the yellow fever, we have not had any in this area. It's just been the West Nile virus. And like I say, Montclair is doing pretty good.
Right.
If you need any questions, I did send a report as far as what's happening that our manager, Michelle, did send me. So if you have any questions, you can call me or call her, and we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Okay, Carolyn, I appreciate that. And I noticed one thing, the ankle mosquitoes, I haven't felt in the last two years, I assume, because of the work of the district?
I think so, because we're, I know even I myself had a problem with them for a while.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, and when I was on the council, I was talking about it. But yeah, we haven't had too many reports. The biggest thing right now, we're having reports, and I think you guys, some of you had mentioned it, is spiders. We're getting a lot of calls on spiders.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may, very quickly, Carolyn.
Yes.
One of the things, I know you and I just talked about it before the meeting, and I've heard Ryan from Mosquito Control talk about this, and it's reminding people about their pets and their water?
Mm-hmm, yes. It's very important when you have pets and you have water that you keep all day, keep an eye on it and make sure it's not attracting. Also, the vector says change it. Don't just leave it standing all day long, change it in between, because the mosquitoes, the longer it sits there, the more bacteria it collects, and especially if the dogs are in it all day, especially in this heat, they love, the mosquitoes love that. So just do that. And also, if you know anyone that has a pool, please tell them to keep an eye on it, because the mosquitoes do like to go into the pools, especially if, I know the vector control has been getting a lot of calls for pools that are turning green, not in Montclair so much, but in some of the other cities, especially Chino and places like that. And they have the basin over there, too. And they're being called in to take care of that, because that's not, once it starts turning, it's not a good thing. They breed, and they breed quickly. But now, since they're doing all of this spraying, and they're doing the mosquito control as far as sterilizing the males, then it's, I think it's getting better and better. And let's keep our fingers crossed it stays that way.
Okay, I know Councilman Ben Lopez wanted to speak, but go ahead.
I think you may have just touched on it, Carolyn, but you had mentioned that we're still spraying.
Yes.
I wanted to know if you were referring to that being the sterile males. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, we, as far as taking, we're still endorsing the male mosquitoes out into the, every couple of weeks, we're doing that, at least through the hot summer, because that's when they breed. And so I think that's probably what's helping it. It's all, like I said before, it's not only us, it's Rancho, it's Upland, it's Ontario, it's Chino, Chino Hills. We're doing it in all of them every couple of weeks, so that's what's.
So every couple of weeks, Montclair is on the list of getting those released? Okay, perfect, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you say hi to Ruby on the line?
No, she's not on the line, so I think we can move on.
Oh, she's not here? Okay, do we have any other public speakers today? Nobody else?
I have no more cards.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar portion of the item, and we will begin with my left. Anybody on my left want to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull C, like Charles, one.
C1. Baby. C1, there it is. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead, Diane? Oh, my right?
I wanted to do C1 as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so everybody pulled item C1. Okay. Then let's go to item C1. Go ahead, Tanise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. I think our city manager can probably answer it in about 30 seconds, but if I read the staff report correctly, it's for, this is for a three-year grant, and I believe this fills the two unfunded positions, but what happens after the grant runs out?
Okay, I need 10 minutes to respond to that question. After the end of the grant, then the positions go away, or the city makes the decision to retain them by allocating additional funding to the general fund, or if there are existing vacancies in the department, we can move those positions into the existing vacancies. So we have those various options.
So it's not automatic, the end of three years, they're going to be gone?
Well, it used to be when it came to these types of personnel grants for public safety positions. There was a requirement that you retain the position for approximately two years after the three-year grant funding has ended, but that requirement seems to have gone away in the current rendition of these types of grants. So at the end of the three years, again, we either let them go, and they would be advised at the time of hiring that this is a grant position, that it is not necessarily guaranteed to be permanent, but at the end of the three years, we have the option of keeping them, letting them go, or filling other existing vacancies with them.
Thank you, City Manager Starr.
Councilman Lopez.
That was actually my question that Ms. Johnson just raised, and that actually was the answer I was hoping wouldn't be the case. So three years from now, or let's say even a year and a half, two years out from now, the city will likely have a lot more residents in the northern part of the district, particularly around the plaza, and buildings that will be higher than two-story. So, well, first of all, let me ask this, where would this medic station be, come out of 151 or 152?
Well, the chief can respond to that if he feels my answer is correct, but I believe it would be operating out of 151, because it is the north end where the majority of the type of calls are generated, and it takes a burden off of the heavier operating equipment.
That's what I was going to get into as well. I would hope that whoever is on this council in 2028 going into 2029 would stipulate that the medic squad, even though these funds will have since expired, that the squad continue. Three years is going to go by pretty quickly. It's going to, we're going to blink, and it's going to already be here. So the demand, the increased demand for this squad is going to only increase year after year out, and to somehow pull it and go back to the situation we have now will do the fire department a disservice, and it will no doubt be something that would not be beneficial to our residents to have it out of service again. I would hope that those in the future, whether I'm on this council or not, would fight tooth and nail to make sure that it is preserved. That said, I do appreciate staff getting this grant, and for the public benefit, this is a safer grant, excuse me, which is a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant in the amount of $691,000 to hire two full-time firefighter paramedics that would man the new medic squad that we paid for the apparatus, I believe, a meeting or two ago. So this is something that has been in the works. Now that we're finally here, I would hope that it would continue, because it will be of benefit, especially with the components of the north downtown Montclair-specific plan being completed in two, three years from now. Those that will be will no doubt add to residents and more foot traffic in the city, where the medic squad may be put to the test and much more in demand. But those are my thoughts on the matter, but overall, I'm pleased with it and glad staff brought this forward, acquired the grant, and we will be hiring the medics. Thank you for this.
So just to be clear, the budget does include two positions that would already be dedicated to medic squad reactivation of it, and as the council is aware, the city has on order a brand-new medic squad that we would be bringing into service. These two grant positions are supplementing the two that are in the budget, so it would be, I believe, administration's intent three years from now to continue those two positions. After all, we are making a quarter of a million-dollar investment in the medic squad this year, as well as bringing on these two individuals that are in the budget now, plus the grant positions.
And thank you each to answer my second question, Ed. Appreciate that, so, so basically saying that is we have four new positions in the fire department, two from, paid from the general fund, two new positions in the new budget, the current budget, and then two more positions coming from the, this proposed grant, and then obviously we're also purchasing, we've already, I think the city council has already authorized for the purchase of a new paramedic unit.
Yes, you did.
The advertisement.
A month ago, yes.
Yeah, a month ago, to go out and advertise for it. And then, of course, in three years, when we get to that point, is my goal to keep the, to keep the medic squad going and keep these, all four positions in place, in addition to the positions that are already, already budgeted from last year's budget. So I think this is one of the promises that we made to the voters of Montclair when Measure L passed in 2020. It's been four years now, and again, the goal here is to get more positions or more field staff on the streets of Montclair, providing service to the people of Montclair. I want to go back, one item I forgot to pull is item B2. This is for the purchase of equipment replaced, of, purchase of a backhoe loader, and it appears this is a electric backhoe loader, not a gas use. Am I correct, Ed?
Yes, that is correct.
So I got an email from this, one of the government affairs person from the South Coast Air Call to Management District last Friday, complimenting the city of Montclair taking this step. I'm not sure how many other cities have, are purchasing electric backhoes right now, but I suspect that this is the beginning of many of to be purchased, based on what I know on the state's goal for, to deal with climate change. Okay, I don't see nothing else, so can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent calendar be adopted as presented.
I'll second.
Second? All right, let's vote electronically. Perfect, then adopt at 5:00. Next item is council workshop. We will meet here on September 16.
Sorry, did it not work?
Didn't work?
You didn't get anything?
No, I didn't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, let's try that again. I guess it didn't pass 5:00, since I jumped the.
Yeah, let me try that again.
Present.
It was glitchy earlier today. I'm not seeing anything. No? Okay, well, roll call vote?
Roll call vote, okay. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections, abstentions? If not, then it's adopted 5:00.
Perfect.
All right. So then, now we go to the council workshop again. We will have a council workshop September 16 at 5:45. Any objections to that? If not, so ordered. We will now go to communications. I will start with the police department.
Good evening, City Council, members of the city, staff, city manager, Starr. Upcoming October of 2024 is a month that breast cancer awareness is recognized, and I would like to speak a little bit on that matter and our proposal, if approved, for a patch redesign, to modernize the patch and to make it consistent, or patch specific for each year, as I have placed the paper in front of you. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual international health campaign organized by major breast cancer charities every October to increase awareness of the disease and to raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. About one in eight women born today in the United States will get breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. Breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among women in the United States, and it is the second-leading cause for death among women after lung cancer. There are approximately 3.1 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer. In support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and for the past multiple years, the Montclair Police Department, if approved, will be raising awareness and promoting early detection of this serious disease by authorizing the wearing of either pink undershirts that you'll see some officers in the past have worn, including pink MPD uniform patches with the authorized uniforms of all sworn and non-sworn personnel from October 1, 2024 till October 31, 2024. We'll be partnering with Loma Linda University Medical Center, as we've done in the past, a 501(c)(3) organization, to raise funds for breast cancer awareness and research. A minimum donation for our employees that we ask is $30 to participate in the program. This program, as in the past, this year would be no different, would be no cost to the city. It's a cost encumbered by each member in the department that participates in it. It's not a required participation, but we do get quite a few of our officers and professional staff who do participate in the program, and we have some who do donate but choose not to put the patches on their uniform as well. I have placed on, in front of each one of you, the current patch, which we have used in the past, which is the same exact patch I'm wearing here with pink highlights. The Montclair Police Officer Association has reached out to our patch designer and wishes to utilize the patch with the pink ribbon on it, as you see in front of you as well, same size, same dimensions, still identifies those as a police officer, as required by law. So with that, I'm open to any questions or concerns or comments.
Any council, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Johnson?
I do have one, it's probably a silly question, but as I'm looking at this patch at the back of it, how does it stay on? Is there some adhesive back here? Does some stitching have to happen? How does it get on?
The members that choose to affix the patches like these are, they'll take them to a tailor or dry cleaner and have them sewn on. And usually what they'll do is they'll have an older uniform that's near the end of service life. They'll take that uniform and they'll, at their own cost, they'll pay to have these, cut these off and put that new affixed to the uniform. It's a permanent, it's not Velcro or anything like that, it's a, it's a normal, affixed in a normal fashion.
Okay. I was trying to figure out how it would come off, but the old uniforms makes perfect sense. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, and when we destroy uniforms after the end of their service life, they'll be cut off and retained. We don't dispose of them. We remove patches, all exignias, before we dispose of a uniform that's at the end of its service life.
Thank you for your response.
Anybody else? Anybody else? I think this is, looks nice, and I want to compliment the team there at the police department for putting this patch together. Obviously, it's a very important cause, and on behalf of the council, tell the staff thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, city attorney, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. One is to meet in closed session regarding pending litigation in Delgado versus Montclair, and the other is to meet in closed session with the city manager, Starr, who is our designated labor negotiator on labor negotiations. Other than those two items, I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. City manager.
No items.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to recognize significant events that will be taking place during the month of September. Obviously, one was yesterday, that was Labor Day. We also have September, we'll have National Grandparents' Day. September 16 will be Mexican Independence Day. September 17 is Constitution Day. September 19 is POW MIA Recognition Day. During the month of September is also Native American Indian Day, and September is also Rasha Hashana. And then finally, during the month of September, October will be National Hispanic Heritage Month. Today, I had a chance to attend a meeting with seven other cities, mostly mayors and staff members, to discuss homelessness. This is our second meeting, was a very productive meeting. The focus was more on the proposed navigation center that the county of San Bernardino is proposing. In addition to that, it was also to talk about the Lower's Law and enforcement tactics that allows us to get those who need service but who refuse the services. So we think there'll be some additional meetings coming up, and hopefully, there's some action plans in the future as a region of this portion of San Bernardino County. I want to recognize Mayor Potem Johnson, I know you were a part of this, but the chamber event last Thursday at the Chino Basin District was a wonderful event, very exciting. I can tell a lot of people were having fun there, and I want to say thank you for you and the entire chamber staff for putting that together. And then finally, we haven't done this, I know some of the regional boards that serve on do this, but in the past, we will cancel some of our meetings, adjourn some of our meetings, not meet at all. So I'm going to do something new in 2025. I'm going to put together a city council meeting schedule, our regular meetings, and then we will try to figure out which meetings that we will just skip for 2025, especially for those who want to plan vacations, have a better idea, and then council, council will not meet. So there's something that the other regional boards do, and I will put together something and we'll have it on the agenda later this year. I will begin with Councilmember Bill Rue.
Thank you. Yesterday was Labor Day. I could go on about a couple of things with that, but suffice to say, it is the day we honor those who are working-class families, and let's give them a thought. When you're in the restaurant next time, remember they're working probably minimum wage. Try to find a little extra to give them a tip with. Many of our families are really struggling. Couple of things on here I wanted to comment on, I'll simply wait due to the evening, but the event last week was very well-done at the Chino Basin Water Conservation District. And the second year in a row, I've donated a basket with Tiffany wine glasses, some wine, things like that, and the second year in a row, Justin from Montavista Water District won it, so I said, I think he's trying to build up to a set of maybe six or eight wine glasses. So we'll see next year what happens. And then the last item, and I'll keep these others for the next meeting. This evening, before our council, I attended the vigil for former planning commissioner Louis Flores. It was held at Griffith, Funeraria del Angel. Those of us who've been around a long time will remember it always as Griffith Mortuary, but it's Funeraria del Angel. Saw his family, had a chance to talk to them, expressed my condolences. I explained I cannot be there tomorrow at the different commemorations due to work schedules, but it was a wonderful, wonderful thing to see Louis's life up there, and I chatted with the family. I'm going to send him some personal memories of things that I have, but it was a really wonderful program they created, and I know Louis will be missed. He loved the city of Montclair. He moved here in 1959 and lived here ever since. Always involved, dedicated to doing things in this city, and really, you could say he was almost a model resident. He just loved living here, so we know we'll miss you. And for those who are attending tomorrow, please again, give the family my best. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'm not going to be able to attend the services tomorrow. I know Tanise will, but I will be, I'll be at the receptions here at City Hall later in the day. Councilmember Lopez.
Just a couple of things. I also attended the Taste of Montclair event that was held by the Montclair Chamber at Chino Basin Water Conservation District. I will echo the kudos and compliments to Ms. Johnson and the chamber volunteers and staff that put it on. What, there are about 150 people?
I think it's closer to about 120, 125. We haven't done the final count yet, but.
Turnout, very good turnout nonetheless. Some of the restaurants that participated here in the city are La Carniceria, right there on Central, and Balo Verde, Applebee's, Lazy Dog, Los Portales, Mr. U. Costco came out and provided some samples, as they always do on weekends, so that's always good to have them around. And some others that I know I'm forgetting.
Buffalo Wild Wings.
Buffalo Wild Wings was there, yes. How could I forget that? Even their mascot was there, two of their mascots were there, actually. But a fun time was had by all, I know many, some of the residents and staff were there, but it was, it was a very good time. I wanted to ask staff, I came across a note of mine in an old council agenda, right around this time last year, I had inquired about the roundabout on Ramona and Howard, and at that time, of course, these are the notes that I had taken, it was 1.2 million for the roundabout, $800,000 would be spent for design, then we were seeking state funds for the balance, and we should know in early 2024. Well, here we are in late 2024. Can I get a status update on that?
Yes, the cost of the roundabout is closer to $2 million, so it's well beyond our capacity to fund at this point, so we have reapplied to the state of California for the additional funding, and we are waiting an answer.
We might have one. Oh.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members and staff. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you yet. We have requested additional funds from Caltrans. They are considering giving us funds, but I have not heard back from them yet. We are short about almost $2 million to build that project.
We're short $2 million?
I think. I don't have my numbers straight right now, but at the presentation I will be giving in two weeks, you will have all the detailed information on that project and all the other projects that we're working on.
So the first allocation, we got the 700, 750,000, that went towards the design?
No, that's for construction.
Okay.
The 130 approximately was for design. The total of that grant was a little bit under $1 million, but I believe it's 2.6 million the cost of the. the cost of the project.
You have an update in two weeks at the workshop?
Yes.
Perfect.
I appreciate it. The information you did provide was helpful. Thank you to Mr. Starr and to you, Monica. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of quick things. Well, first, I want to thank everybody who attended the Night in the Garden event last week. I appreciated your presence. I wanted to thank you, Mayor Dutre, for installing the board of directors at that event.
It was short?
Yeah, it was, it was quick and easy. I like that. So I hope that we, I hope that everyone enjoyed themselves, and we'll look forward to doing it next year again for the third annual. Then there's a couple of new events coming up. There is a networking breakfast scheduled for September 12th at the Chino Basin Water Conservation District. So if you have any water questions, this is a fantastic time for you to attend our networking breakfast. The general manager there, Elizabeth Willis, as well as one of the board members, Katie Parker, will be our speakers for that event. So if you have any interest in water, want to know where, what comes from, how it gets where it goes, please join us for breakfast on September 12th at the Chino Basin Water Conservation District. That address is 4594 San Bernardino, for people who are not familiar with it. And also, I want to let you know that, of course, the holidays are approaching, and we're all going to get new gadgets and stuff. But so in preparation for all the new gadgets we're going to acquire during the holidays, you can take September 28th and 29th to get rid of all the stuff that you're going to replace. So we will have an e-waste event on Saturday, the 28th, and Saturday, 29th, Sunday, the 29th. It will be right here at Alma Hoffman Park, and it'll take you about five minutes. You just pull up, somebody will pop your truck, somebody will take it out, and you'll be on your way. So I hope you can come through for the e-waste event on those two dates. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing, okay.
Real quickly, what was, what was the month and dates again on the e-waste?
The month and date is September 28th, Saturday, September 28th, and Sunday, September 29th.
Alma Hoffman.
Alma Hoffman.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and I want to say I appreciate staff being here today, and the audience here. And with that, we'll now go into closed session.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. One more thing, I forgot, I totally forgot about. I'm happy, I was happy to hear today that the splash pad is going to be open through September 15th, as we, 19th, 15th? I'm sorry, Ms. Richter, can you help me? Through the 18th?
Eighteen. All right, eighteen.
Oh, I'm trying to extend it even farther, sorry.
Raging Waters, right? About Raging Waters time it shuts down.
You wait on that Sunday, if how the weather is, but.
Thank you very much. But the bottom line is, it's going to be open a few days longer than usual, so thank you for that.
Okay, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.